Call the May Study Session. Board of Utilities.
Board of Utilities.
Lisa, I haven't forgot you.
Your own stuff.
Wow.
Let's try that again.
Try this again. One of those boards I was on.
I love it.
Yeah, really. Oh, be quiet.
I always wanted to be on that board.
I do not.
And do that. Records show that everyone's here. Lena will be a few minutes late. She's on her way. So she'll be here soon. So if you would, stand for the Budget Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm sure I'm not going to live that one down, so.
Not today.
That will come back to home meeting. So this time I'd like to introduce Tracy Bledsoe for some special recognition.
Thank you.
Great.
Yes, we have quite a few this evening. We have a house full of students and proud parents who are here to support them. We're recognizing our Missouri Scholars Academy participants and our Missouri Fine Arts Academy participants. So we'll start first with our Missouri Scholars Academy. We have 15 SPS students attending. There are 330 students statewide who have been selected. They were nominated by their schools to participate in this three-week program. It will be held at the University of Missouri Columbia in June 11th through July 1st. And this gives these gifted students an opportunity to experience unique educational learning experiences. So I'll start by calling up our students from Central. If you are here from Central and you're a Missouri Scholars Academy, please step forward. They're in line up. I'll introduce you. You can stand on either side of me. We have a few students who aren't with us, so let's start with those who are. Katie Liu is here.
Hi, Katie.
Katie, I'll hand you your certificate.
Yeah, thank you.
And Katie is accompanied by her parents, Robert Liu and Jennifer Zi. If they'd please stand. Next, we have Aiden Ziegler. Aiden is accompanied by his parents, Toby Ziegler and Tracy Corbin, and his grandparents Lynn and Tammy Corbin. August Holgus, he's here with his mother, Jemla Cox. Jennifer, if you please stand to be recognized. Michael Lee and his mother, Ja Jin Chin. Andrew Eisenhower is our next scholar. He's here with his father, Tim Eisenhower. Sorry. And Alexander Hudson. His parents, Christian and Jessica Hudson. And then Brian Liu is with his mother, JJ Wei. And then, have I missed anybody that's here from Central? We have several students who aren't present. Malia Morgan, Kate Skalicki, Asa Scott, and Brittany Oliver. So we'd like to honor these students from Central High School. We have one student from Glendale High School who's been selected as a Missouri Scholars Academy, Hannah Loder. If you'd come forward. Her parents, Kathy Hopper and Michael Loder, are with her this evening. And Kickapoo students, if you'd come forward, Missouri Scholars Academy, Joshua Lawson and Taylor Cobb. I believe Samantha Kohlmeier is not with us this evening. Joshua is here with his parents, Daniel and Rebecca Lawson. And Taylor is here with his parents, Alex and Jill Cobb and his brother Timothy. And is Samantha Kohlmeier not here? So that concludes our Missouri Scholars Academy recipients. Next, we have four students from Central who are participating in the Missouri Fine Arts Academy. These students apply each year with their portfolio or a video audition tape and are selected to participate in this three-week residential program which takes place at Missouri State University during June. So I would invite Becca Davis, Emma Dawson, and Ashley Riley to come forward. Becca Davis is here with her parents, Dennis and Diane Davis. If they'd please stand. And Emma Dawson is here with her parents, Dr. Mike Dawson and Wendy Dawson. If they would please stand. And Ashley Riley, her parents Philip and Monica are here to support her along with her sister Carrie. So before I close, I'll just ask one more time. Were there any students present that I didn't recognize that came in after? Okay. Thank you.
Any comments? Report? Congratulations.
Absolutely. Representatives at our best.
And I know several students have concerts and other activities, so we will let them take their leave right now. Thank you.
Plus, it gets boring from here, so.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion by Charles. Second by Denise. Okay. At this point, it's time for public comments to address agenda items. And we do have four speakers tonight. And so I would like to remind that the board welcomes comments from the audience about the issues being discussed. It's recommended that request to speak submitted prior to beginning of the meeting, which we have four. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed. You'll see it up on the screen, the little clock on both of them. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. So our first speaker is Gabe Isaacson.
Five, okay, just to three minutes. So I'm going to read this, so I hope I don't mangle it too bad. My name is Gabe Isaacson, and I'm president of Springfield NEA. First, I would like to thank the educators and community members who have come out this evening in support of PHS teachers, counselors, and librarians for National Teacher Appreciation Day. This evening, I want to speak to the efforts of Springfield educators who work each day to maintain high-quality public education for all Springfield students. This evening, excuse me. In the last two years, in addition to their many other duties, Springfield teachers have implemented one-to-one technology in their classrooms in a shorter period of time than any other district in the state. They have moved away from the use of textbooks in favor of online applications and teaching materials and have moved out from behind their desks in order to monitor flexible learning spaces. They have embraced new technology and given up tools they have trusted to do the good work that they do every day. Springfield educators have implemented a vast network of programming and classroom innovations to create opportunities for their students. They use their planned time and professional development for collaborative learning, blended learning, and other building initiatives. They remain professional, positive, and focused on students' access to quality public education. Through launch, Springfield highly qualified Missouri and DESI-certified teachers and adjunct educators have made possible the opportunity to preserve public education and create new opportunities for the southwest region of the state. These professional and passionate Springfield educators continue to go above and beyond keeping students central in the decisions which govern all that they do. The SPS Board of Education and Administration should recognize Springfield educators as indispensable to this district for their commitment to students and for the many accomplishments of this district that they have made possible. And so I would like to address that to the budget. Thank you.
Next speaker is Deb Olson.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Debbie Olson, and I discovered yesterday on your website that you are considering several different companies for substitute teaching. And I have had the pleasure of subbing in Springfield schools since I retired. I know, after the 34 years I taught, one of my biggest concerns was getting qualified teachers to come, substitutes to come in when I was gone. I know that you've gone through a process, you've listened to presentations, and you know a whole lot more about this than I do. But I also feel like it would, it would do my heart good, if nothing else, to let you know a few reasons why I think this system and the Kelly services that I work for is great. Let me, let me say, I'm here representing myself because my passion is teaching, and I'm very thankful I've been able to have both retirement and teaching at the same time. When I trained for Kelly, one of the most important things I heard them say is, "Do not take a job that you are not qualified to teach. If you can't teach math, don't take a math job. If you can't teach English, don't take an English job." And I immediately thought, wow. They actually were saying, you know, "When you go to the classroom, you will teach." And that impressed me tremendously because it is kind of a, just to take what comes in your room, you know, when you're, when you're teaching, and you never quite know what to expect. So I was very impressed with that. I was impressed with their professionalism. You'll be dressed professionally. If you have a free period, you need to ask for, if there's anything you can help with. So that is something that really impressed me. I also was impressed with the fact that the first time I got a thank you, as a group, we received thank you saying, "Good job, good job, subs. We filled 450 positions on Friday." And as a sub individually, I don't know that, but their communication is great. We already have a message from them that March 12th, uh, May 12th is projected to be a busy sub day, so if we can prioritize what we're doing and work. So I feel like their organization is outstanding. And I think one other thing, just as a sub in your schools, that I see that I'm not sure, maybe it may not even be something that you've thought about. I see for the past two years absolutely wonderful, new, innovative programs that are being implemented in your school. And I see that's change. And even change, in a good way, still creates so much stress and so much extra time needed for the staff that, you know, when I read that you were considering changing, I thought, with all of the other changes, when you have a system that works, that's good, that's there, why throw one more thing in the mix that would involve administrators, teachers, paras, administrative professionals to try to grasp a whole new system, including me as a sub? So I just felt that it was something that I needed to speak about. I feel very passionately about teaching, and I love what I do, and your schools are fabulous. I did not retire from Springfield schools, but I am so glad that I have had this opportunity to work at some of the schools that, several, great kids, great staff. They're embracing everything, and, and so are we. I mean, I've been embracing Chromebooks. I appreciate that, and the students are moving in the right direction. I just am concerned about one more thing that's already working for everybody to have to embrace. So I thank you. I thank you for your time and for your consideration. I am very impressed with Springfield schools and what we're working on now. And again, I've been impressed with Kelly services because I cannot imagine needing 350 teachers at a time. So thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions for you if you can do that now. No, I'm not supposed to. Okay, never mind. I thought I was on Shark Tank, I guess. I will not. So, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melody Tomlinson.
I'm Melody Tomlinson. I am district manager with Kelly Services. As your substitute staffing partner for the past 10 years, Kelly Educational Staffing is proud of the impact we make on students K-12 education. Kelly Educational Staffing is a lower-cost supplier, highest-ranked technical for the purchasing evaluation results, and a trusted partner of Springfield Public Schools for over 10 years with a consistent 99% fill rate over that period. Kelly Educational Staffing has been honored and proud to have had the opportunity to serve Springfield. I thank you for your time.
Our final speaker is Jeannie McCleary.
Yes, you did. You did great.
Got one?
Hi, I'm Jeannie McCleary, as he stated already. I'm actually here to read a letter from a substitute of Kelly Educational Staffing. She regrets that she was not able to be here. It's Ms. Donna Setron. And she wrote, "I have been a substitute for Springfield Public Schools since 2003. In 2007 and '08 school year, Kelly Educational Staffing took over the assigning substitute for Springfield Public Schools, which was no easy task, as the Springfield Public School District is the largest accredited district in the state and growing. In the past 10 years, Kelly Educational Staffing, part of an international corporation providing temporary staffing needs worldwide, has met the oftentimes daunting job of filling ever-increasing demand for substitutes who meet the high standard of the Missouri Department of Education as well as stringent background checks. Kelly is, Kelly provides its clients and employees with the most modern technology and training available, continually updating and achieving maximum performance. From a personal experience, I know that Kelly also provides its employees job-specific job training in many areas so that each employee can reach their full potential in order to better service the needs of the district. They also make available a variety of benefits for employees to purchase, plus perks, through many of their worldwide partners. Their employment numbers have very positively impacted the Springfield, the city of Springfield." She brings up that the recommended provider is, is in scope small in comparison with branches in only seven states. While I'm certain it is professional operation, it cannot offer what both the Springfield School District staff and its substitutes have come to expect from Kelly in all areas necessary in the request to service over 25,000 students in their district. For the benefit of all, please keep Kelly Educational Staffing as the provider for substitutes in the Springfield District and keep up, keep up their excellent record of service." And that is a thank you from Welladonna Setron.
Thank you.
Thank you, all the speakers. Moving on. Item 3.1, 3.01, informational reports. We have none for tonight. And moving on to item 4, 4.01, contracts, agreements, bids, and change orders. And I'll give time if everyone wants to stay or leave. Like Jill said, it gets better.
Is that what I said?
No. Okay.
Good evening. We have posted for you 28 separate items under contracts, bids, agreements, and change orders. And these, as always, are provided to you for first read, and then at the May 23 meeting, we would be seeking approval for them. If you have any questions about anything specific, I'd be happy to answer that. It's quite the plethora. Among these agreements include the construction team's work and also preparation for explore, as well as some other individual items to support nutrition services and go-kits. We do have the, one, primary one is the exclusive beverage service contract that's been out for RFP, and a comprehensive cross-divisional team has been reviewing that. So we'll be bringing that forward for your approval, May 23 as well.
Questions for Carol? I've noticed we've had, we had a lot the last time.
A lot.
Is that just the end of the year?
It's, it's the cycle.
Just the cycle? It's ending?
We, we do try to have our agreements run a July 1 through June 30 to mirror our fiscal year, and so that causes a number of them to be renewed at this time.
Okay. Go with the comments.
Just one comment. It was to my heart good to see 40 members of the Kickapoo Central Park View, Glendale speech and debate team.
Yes. Yes, we have celebrations embedded within these agreements as well. And again, some of them are simply notifications for you. The funding source may be a partnership or fundraiser opportunities, but anything that hits that threshold, we try to provide you as well as memorandums of understanding.
Questions? Okay. We will vote on those, May 23. Next item, item 5.01, board policy. We have several policies listed for first reading. Any questions? If somebody has questions to refer to the staff, or if anybody's got questions now about any of those, most of them deal with HR stuff, and so Lisa's here, if you have any questions.
Time over the next two weeks. If you're free to reach out and follow up.
These are all MSBA.
Some of them are, they're MSBA policies, but they're local revisions.
But even with local revisions, they're reviewed by MSBA to make sure they're consistent.
You got it. So they meet statutory requirements.
Okay. With that, we will, as normal, we will vote on those on May 23. New business? There is no new business. Unfinished business? Item 7.101, substitute services. Carol?
Okay, so I will highlight for you that I did just update the posting information with regard to the recommendation. Excuse me. I'm taking on something here.
I know, I can hear it.
So before you, we, we did post this at the last board meeting, and it is posted this evening for your approval consideration. And that is a request for proposal was issued for substitute employment services on March 10th, 2017. Responses were due April 7. We did receive seven responses from, from the various firms, and those were reviewed by a committee that was formed. And the committee was comprised of myself and Lisa Turner, our Chief Human Resources Officer, served in an advisory capacity and worked with the conference of team to develop out the RFP. And then beyond that, our Director of Information Technology, Human Resources Manager, Benefit Specialist, and an Application Specialist also participated through the review process. There were four vendors who were selected for presentations to the committee, and ultimately the committee runs Penmax Staffing Services Incorporated to provide substitute services for a three-year contract subject to annual review. The savings over the current year contract with Kelly Services is estimated to be $103,273 in year one, $113,495,000 in year two, and $102,159 in year three. And that includes the reduction for the direct purchase of the software licensure to provide for that avenue. Under contracts, agreements, change orders, and bids listed for your consideration and approval at the May 23 meeting is the ASOP Frontline Software. That is the same company that provides the software through Kelly Services as well. So this does include that reduction for the software. Absent the reduction for the software, it would be $149,674, $145,895, and $134,559. So I can provide you with other information if you're interested, or I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Carol? Charles?
Yes.
While they may not have been on the committee, did the committee solicit input from the people closest, sort of the teachers, the principals, et cetera, who have benefited from the services?
You know, we did not go through that process, and I will, I'll help you understand why. Our perception with regard to how we provide this service is something that needs to fly under the radar and absent any engagement with our leaders in the buildings. We want them to be able to focus on the learner. What we will do through an implementation process is include them, and actually I had a conversation with Dr. Anderson about that, that we would include them on a team to collaborate and determine what is, what would the needs be within the buildings. We reviewed the response based on the technical pieces of the RFP, and included, excuse me, recommended, the RFP award indicated that it would be recommended based on the technical presentation meeting the RFP criteria, the oral presentation and including organization and history, workflow and process, training for substitutes and support staffs, communication, and the recruiting plan, and then, of course, price was included in that as well.
Can you tell us who was on the committee?
Beyond the positions?
Yeah.
Okay. So Lisa Turner and myself, Bruce Douglas, Kim Mulvaney, I didn't mention her before, Director of Finance, Kim Mulvaney was on there, Melanie Simpson, and Kim Serat, and Andy, help. Andy.
Nelson.
Nelson, thank you. Andy Nelson. I'm sorry, I had the position titles, but not the names.
If we have the software, if we have access to the software that we own it, can you talk a little bit about what that enables us to do that we cannot presently do?
Sure. So currently, when we need information, data with regard to Kelly Services reporting, we contact them to obtain that information. And this would enable us to directly access and produce our own reports and provide additional information beyond that, or more readily available information.
Denise?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. So substitute services, our teachers, secretaries?
Right.
Teachers? What else? What else do they?
I'm looking at, when we constructed the RFP, we asked Kelly to provide us with the, some data from FY '16 so that we would have a, have a comprehensive set of data. So the additional positions listed and on which pricing has been provided includes assistant principal, an assistant to the principal, the paraprofessional or classer name, speech-language pathologist at an hourly basis, interpreter, substitute secretary, library clerical, in addition to, of course, substitute teachers, which is the primary.
So, and I think the thing that, that I want to be clear on in my little information presentation is that the capacity, I mean, that's a lot of different positions, and it requires a lot of coordination in the calling, the placing, the collecting, the data, and the. lot of coordination in the calling, the placing, the collecting, the data, and the training piece, which you indicated was a part of the RFP, how that training. So obviously, and I'm not second guessing the committee, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear that, that who you are.
Penmax.
Yeah, Penmax, that's your, right. They have the capacity to handle what this is. I mean, that's a big question, I know, and you can, and you can talk about that.
And I'll invite Lisa Turner to join me if she would care to do that. But all indication to the committee was that they believe there will be no issues at all in being able to reach our needs. The agreement would go into effect August 1, so there would be a window of time to work toward that end in preparing, which is why we had it at a off-cycle in terms of the vote, asking for it this evening.
Other questions? I just got one, I tell.
Yeah. Trying to think how to ask it. So we see it from this angle in terms of all the different criteria, and cost is one that you've outlined here, but I guess, do we know what, how pay looks differently for what one company has paid?
You mean to the receiver?
Yes.
The person subbing?
Yes. Do you anticipate there being a change in what?
No. And that is something that the district sets that price point.
Okay. So the company doesn't?
Right. And so that we could do an apples-to-apples comparison. We provided data regarding number of absences for a fiscal year, the price for each of the roles, each of the positions. Again, so that not only could we compare it, but that was, that's part of that communication. And we have, we don't have any expectation that that would change at this time.
No questions? I have one, just, it's more mechanical. It says it's a three-year contract, subject to annual review. Is that the same as a one-year contract with two extensions?
It's actually.
Or is that, I mean, semantics, I'm just, which is?
Right. It is actually, it is a three-year contract, subject to annual review, as indicated, and so the interpretation of that would mean that in the event that there were any challenges, that naturally there would need to be communication along the way, but then there would be notification provided.
So it would require an issue rather than?
Right.
An extension? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
It would be a performance issue rather than just a timing?
That's my interpretation.
Okay. All right. Curious about the semantics there. Okay. Any other questions for Carol?
Just to say that this has been bid before?
It was bid in 2012. So we have been with Kelly since 2007, and it was bid in 2012. There were two companies who responded, and the bid was awarded again to Kelly at that time.
So they were on a five-year contract this last time? They were on a five-year contract?
It's have annual renewals occurring, and it had, it had the ability to continue with renewals.
Right. Yeah, which is different than what this is.
That's different than what we got now.
From my perception, yes.
Okay. Mine too, that's what. Okay. Any other questions or comments? And we do need to take action tonight.
Yes.
On that. So the recommended action that we have is that the board approves the superintendent to designate, to sign a contract authorizing Penmax Staffing Services, Inc. as a third-party service provider for substitute services. And I would entertain a motion.
So much.
Bruce? Have a second?
Second.
Jill?
No opportunity to vote.
Thank you. There you go. Take it. Thank you. Machine carry? Okay. Ms. Ember, you're back up.
I'm back up. And I'm realizing, I didn't post my PowerPoint. I did not, so we'll go through it on Board Docs. This happened to me one time before. How do I, I need technologies, somebody in the house? Maybe Ren.
Teresa will help.
Yeah. Well, I did not post my PowerPoint. No, I need to just pull up. It's posted within Board Docs, so do I just go up here? No, just go here.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay. I apologize.
I got the SPS.
Oh, that is not what I was trying to do.
Let's watch that.
It is in the public session. I just backspace.
Yeah, just a minute.
Okay. It'll go right there if I just. I think. It usually, no, it won't work for me. Okay. I apologize. Okay. Let me see if we can do it this way. We'll do it the old-fashioned way.
Go through.
And agendas. And here we go. Okay. I apologize. I've switched, I've switched to PowerPoint, so I can't just log on to Presi anymore, and my brain has not retrained on that. So, so just bear with me. Okay. This evening, we are talking about budget development, and with specific focus on purchase services and supplies. Again, remind you of the funds that are managed by SPS, and this is part of the general fund or Funds 10, 50, and 60 primarily. This is our budget development timeline. Shows you tonight is purchase services and supplies, and then on May 23, we'll talk about current year salary and benefits in preparation for the budget presentation on June 6. Our objectives this evening include sharing the fund components, the fund sources, the types of expenditures, salary and benefit information, which is basically a reference to when we'll talk about it, and then the primary purchase service areas and supply areas. So here's a visual that helps you understand that when we talk about operating funds, I'm kind of getting scratchy, aren't I?
I am.
It's not good. Operating funds are made up of the general fund and the teacher fund. And then, as sub-funds of the general fund, we have the food service fund and also student activity funds. So operating fund sources include, obviously, the carryover fund balance, which is the annual routine. We have local and county revenues, and state revenues, federal revenues, and others. So pretty much any, any resource can be attributed to the operating fund. And as a reminder, revenue details will be provided to you at that June 6 meeting as well. Hopefully by then, we will have some great information from the state. So this shows you a breakdown of the operating fund expenditure types, and you can see that our salary and benefits runs typically close to that 80% when you combine benefits with salaries. Purchase services runs at around 9% of our overall budget, and then supplies 12% of the operating funds. So there's that reminder that we'll talk about salary and benefits, that large section of general revenue. So this shows you now the slice of the pie. When we take a look at overall operating funds, how much is representing supplies and how much is purchase services? So in the current year, the supply budget is approximately $31.7 million, and the purchase service budget is approximately $22.4 million. That's where we get that 12 and that 9%. And then if we unpack those a little bit more, you can see that for purchase services, the support services section, and this is relative to coding that's required by the state of Missouri, so remember when we've talked about the Annual Secretary of the Board Report, or ASBR, when the auditor spoke, and we posted that for your approval, this breaks that down. So from an instructional perspective, 31%, support services, 67%, and then community services is 2%. The supply budget is broken into 40% instructional, 57% support services, and then 3% community services. And as a reminder for you, when we talk about some of the support services that are wraparound services for the classroom, that would include even if it's a counselor who is purchasing supplies, then that would be part of support services. The fuel in our buses, the food in the cafeterias, those fall under support services within the coding structure of the general ledger. Are there any questions about any of that so far? Just keep on moving. Feel free to ask. This is just to provide you context with the magnitude of what it takes to build the budget. So we have in excess of 20,000 active expenditure codes. Now, purchase services represents 2,073,7, supply codes 1,001,96. 19% of our active codes are for purchase services and supplies, and the remaining are for those salary and benefit costs. There's a lot of work that goes into building the budget behind the scenes, and then lots of layers of people engaged through that process. So this slide shows you the primary purchase services by object code category, and again, this is taking another slice view that would also be available through looking at the ASBR report that is posted each year. And also, each month, we're providing you with financial reports that provide you the same view on these codes. So for professional and technical services, our budget is approximately $4,866, or 21% of all purchase services. And substitute services is just under the $4 million mark, and that's comprehensive of not only the daily rate that gets paid out to the employee who shows up to do the substitute service, but also the markup that, for instance, what, that was just approved. Currently, we're at a 35% markup, and next year it will move to a 29.1% markup with the new agreement. So the training, extracurricular activities, and supervision, that, and that also includes travel within that too, but there are a variety of costs that get coded there, and that also can include professional development that comes from the Professional Development Committee, which utilizes our 1% funds provided by the state. So that's $2,386, or 11%. And then purchase instructional services, $1,787,200. And again, a variety of tuition can be posted there. We have very specific guidelines from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, School Finance Department with regard to how we code our expenditures or our revenues in the system. So a reminder for you, professional, technical can be any work that's performed by non-employees, and that's why we do have that subservices line in there. So if you were to compare our district to other districts that have that in-house, their salary and benefits would be higher. The percentage would run higher because we would be directly paying them. So again, contracted athletic officials, snow removal, mowing, all those things. We do contract out still the management for nutrition services, and so that is coded under professional, technical. This shows you, again, purchase services and professional services from a function perspective. And so now you can see that 44% is instructional. It's kind of running off there. We have technology 3%, transportation 2%, grounds 5%, building maintenance 10%, and then there are a number of other categories that are lumped together in this 35% section. Nutrition services is 1% of that total. This, again, references to substitute services, where those are directly charged to a purchase service code. For training, extracurricular activities, and supervision, that can include student transportation activities, student activities, and the professional development of staff. And this shows you that function view from a coding perspective of the training piece. So again, you can see that significant pieces support instruction directly, or as indirect or wraparound services for instruction. So I mentioned before tuition. I did not mention that local tax effort that we're required to pay per statute if students are attending in another area. There is a local tax effort billing that occurs, and that's typically with regard to our students with special needs. So if we look at supplies, we have general supplies at just over $17 million, food supplies $5,880, utilities $5,164, and gas and diesel $732,000, with books and that type of purchase item $1,233. And this, again, is the current year budget. This shows you a visual of that breakdown. You can see 57% are supplies, 20% food supplies, utility 17%. That'd be city utilities, utilities. Just so you know.
Ah, she's, she's on theme.
Sorry.
Nice work, Amber.
So supplies do include warehouse supplies for classrooms and offices. That would include technology. I mentioned the food before, so, and then non-food, I'm sorry, non-food goes to general supplies. So non-food could be napkins, and if we use any disposable ware, that type of thing. And then supplies used for repairs by staff. So our maintenance crew, when they go out into our buildings to fix things, they purchase supplies that way. This shows you a function view of the supply breakdown, so you can see instruction 35%, nutrition services 21%, building maintenance 22%. None of those are surprising, and they, they stay pretty consistent from year to year. So that is it on purchase services and supplies. Do you have any questions for me?
Question for Carol.
A few slides back, you said that books?
Yes.
Is a million, about a million and quarter. Is that all covered, basically, or is that literally books?
I would say it's a combination. And I will tell you, back in the day, I'm real old-school here, we actually had a specific revenue stream from the state that required us to code textbooks, and we had free text revenue. John, are you nodding your head? You remember that?
I've heard of it.
You've heard of it? I think it went away in the 80s.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think it went away in the 80s. But a lot, so when Dr. Pilly comes before you and provides you with the new, yes, the new, the plan, a lot, she's spending a lot of that money, yes.
Would it also include library books, that sort of thing?
Oh, sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Carol? I had one on, on the extracurricular, talking about student transportation. Is that contracted transportation? Is that our buses? Is that part of the transportation funding that we get from the state? Is that covered in that? Or is that?
Are you talking about the purchase service section?
Training, extracurricular activities, and supervision.
Okay.
You said student transportation.
Right.
And I didn't know if that was, if that was.
Let's see what I had.
Our buses, or is that contracting out with Greyhound to take it somewhere?
No. What I would say to you in that regard, are you talking about this 2% slice right here?
I have no idea.
Maybe it's up in the grid.
It says right there. Yeah, that's the slide.
Yeah, it is.
Right there.
Sorry, I don't mean to make you dizzy.
Student transportation, yes.
So, yeah, so there could be some contracted-out student transportation that would appear in the purchase services area. And, and we do that sometimes because we, quite frankly, don't have enough buses to run the trips that are required when activities are taking place and regular routes need to take place. So definitely, we would outsource at times, and it would be coded as.
And I'm assuming that's not covered under. And I'm assuming that's not covered under state funding, reimbursable because it's outside of-
Right. It has to be approved routes.
Go to school and go back to school.
Right.
All the other stuff is on us.
But this could be labor, our own bus drivers. It could be contract, or not?
No, no, those-
Strictly contract.
It would strictly be contracted. And this could also, I mean, there could be, within the purchase services for transportation, the 2% in total, that could also include if we need to pay another company to rebuild an engine for repairing, that type of thing, where we wouldn't, our own labor wouldn't make the changes.
Got you. Okay.
Good question.
Carol?
Okay. All right, well, we survived with me not posting my thing.
Okay.
All right. What all did I open up? There we go.
Thank you, Carol. Moving on to item eight, public comments to address non-agend items. We do have one speaker tonight. I would also like to remind the speakers that we allow comments that are related, not related to agenda items. These will be limited to three minutes for each speaker, and will be timed, once again, by the board. Just watch the boards. I'll say it again, it's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. And our speaker is Melissa Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Jungman, Dr. Dawson, other administrators, teachers, educators, and community members. I am Melissa Albright, and I am a 5th grade English Language Arts Social Studies teacher at Wilson's Creek School, and I also am a nationally board-certified teacher. I am one of 15 national board-certified teachers from across the nation that has been elected to represent teachers on the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards Board of Directors. I am one of 112,000 teachers from across the United States that have seeked this advanced certification. I am one of 947 Missouri teachers who have achieved national board certification, and one of six educators here in the Springfield Public Schools that have achieved national board certification. This has been the single greatest professional development that I have done in my 28 years of teaching. I have masters, a specialist, a doctor, but this is the one thing that has directly impacted my relationship with students and with my own education. The founding mission of National Board of Professional Teaching Standards is to advance the quality of teaching and learning by maintaining high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should be able to do and what teachers should know. As we all know, teachers directly impact students and student learning, and this is illustrated in the five core propositions of National Board. Teachers are committed to students and their learning. Teachers know the subject they teach and how to teach those subjects to students. Teachers are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning. Teachers think systematically about their practice and learn from experience. And teachers are members of learning communities. I would like to present each of you with a newly revised book, What Teachers Should Know and Be Able to Do, that was just released by the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards. I have attached my business card in case you would like to know more about the process or have sit down and talk with me about what a great achievement this is. And also let you know that on June 19th, at the Springfield NEA office, from 1:30 to 4:30, we are going to have an informational meeting, and we are hoping that we can encourage all of our teachers here in Springfield and in surrounding areas to attend that workshop. Thank you so much for recognizing the accomplishment of those teachers earning national board certification with a stipend, and it is our hope that we can have more teachers go through this process and achieve this great certification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Moving on to item nine, strategic discussion. 9.01, focus area three. Carol, this is your night.
On court.
I do, you know, resolve or reside in the business side of the house, so that's all right. And I would like to thank Ren, who is the wizard behind the curtain for us, running technology, for posting my presentation. I should have asked her to post the other one. And not only posting it, but she does a lot of work to support us through this, so thank you, Ren. Okay, so this evening is, is this my mid-year report? It's my spring report. It's my spring report on focus area three, financial sustainability and operational efficiency. And so we're highlighting for you this evening some of our progress that we've actually celebrated along the way through board meetings, because I do have the opportunity to engage with you and talk with you about the work that we're doing. This slide shows us strategy 3.1.1, where we're talking about maximizing revenue from state, local, and government sources. And we've talked about the fact that really fitting within this area also is reducing expenditures and controlling costs, which we spend a significant amount of time doing as we do new reviews of contracts and do RFPs and seek better pricing. So this highlights the celebration of MedTrax and Mercy, where we have a $1.5 million savings through negotiated contracts for health and pharmacy benefits. And a reminder for you that that agreement with Mercy that we entered into back in 2015, it's resulted in a 12.8% per capita medical expense savings. That equals a $1.2 million in claims expense savings, and we shared that with Mercy. And so there are $600,000 for us. This has provided a continued stabilization of the Health Benefit Trust Fund for us. And that again was the result of a negotiated contract that occurred at that time. The second item to highlight is the recent pharmacy renewal negotiation, and I'd like to express thanks. Of course, I partner with Lisa Turner through much of this work, and so through her efforts as well. And we would both want to acknowledge JW Terrell, our new broker, for all that they do for us. They have delivered significant energy to the process and been very much a partner in negotiating on these prices. So that negotiated savings is an estimated, we thought originally it'd be a $600,000 savings. It's estimated at this point to be a $900,000 savings, and of course, that's looking at historical data. And that is provided to our employees with no planned design changes, and that's the most important celebration to highlight, too, that not only have we been able to, through these savings, not only have we been able to continue with no planned design changes for our employees and their families to enjoy, but we've also been able to stabilize the fund and not increase the expenditures that are attributed to our operating funds. So huge celebration.
Who was our broker before?
Gallagher.
Okay, just on this?
We were with Gallagher for all of our health.
And now the new one, again, is-
JW Terrell.
Okay. Thank you.
And we did an RFP a couple of years ago for broker services. So moving forward, the next area-
We should probably just stop for another minute?
I'm sorry?
I wonder if there's any other employer who can say what you just said.
I'm astonished.
So I found words while my friends over here. I mean, that's a really big deal.
It is a big deal.
I mean, I know we're excited about the savings, but to have done that with not making any changes for our employees, that's really impressive. Thank you.
Yes. Again, it is definitely a partnership and a lot of people pulling to make that happen. So it's been a good thing. Okay, shall I move forward? But thank you for the pause. That was good. That was-
I just wanted to stop to say that.
Yes.
That was cool.
That's right.
For the people we're here for.
And what I didn't say on the health benefit is that's during a time when a number of other entities are seeing increases.
That was my point.
Yes.
I don't know who else can say that.
Right.
And I'm really glad we achieved that for our employees. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, now we'll highlight strategy 3.1.3, and this is the one that gets me most excited, I have to say. The money's really good, okay? Don't get me wrong. But I'm super excited when we are able to affect change and make someone's work world better and more efficient. And so this again is that research and implement best practices for process improvement and create collaborative, multi-divisional teams focused on operational efficiency. I don't know if he's behind me, but Bruce Douglas is the guy who really drives this effort, and he is our director of informational technology and does a phenomenal job. He's one of those very unique people that he gets, he can do spreadsheets, he can do programming, he can do it all, so. But he gets workflow, and that's what really matters. So the work that we've been doing, the highlights for you this evening, the Munis software, we have worked really, really hard to affect change in that area. We still have a long way to go, but our first stop was to do an investment review of that to determine what we need to do to make things better. The operation unify continues, and I've got some recommendations that have come forward. And then also, from a process improvement perspective, we consider that the internal work that BKD is doing and providing to you their draft reports and final reports, which we will be posting that athletic audit, we'll plan to post that for the May 23rd approval. That also helps us get better. So with regard to the Munis software investment, what we've done is we have, we've shifted some responsibilities around to free up one particular employee in the finance department to be a project leader collaborating with Bruce Douglas, and then also, that's out of the finance payroll side. And then from the HR side, we have a human resources manager who does a phenomenal job and understands process improvement and that type of thing, too. And so they are working hard every day, and actually, we have members at a conference this evening, or this week, rather, learning more about the software. So we're being very thorough because we need to understand how can we make this, yes, please?
Regarding Munis, this is a software that the district has had for a number of years, correct?
Right, like a decade, I think.
And have you had any experience with Munis before?
I had not, and as I understand, it's more common in municipalities, thus the name Munis. It is a Tyler Technologies product. And in my conversation with Dr. Jungman, we know we have challenges and opportunities for improvement. And so before we would ever consider, do we need to change software, we need to know that we are utilizing this software to its fullest capacity.
I was gonna say, my guess is it's really robust.
It is.
Highly complex, and then you've got to put a lot into it to get a lot out.
That's exactly right.
Yeah. Most enterprise software like this is that way.
Right.
And it's probably a bit expensive.
Yes. And yes, for us to take on a software replacement would be a very costly and time-consuming endeavor. And so we cannot misstep in terms of ensuring that we are utilizing this to its fullest capacity.
So what you're trying to do is get deeper into it and get the, kind of like using a percentage of the brain.
That's right.
You've always been using a percentage of the brain.
Exactly. That's a great analogy, yeah. So it's a lot of heavy lifting, and in the meantime, we need to continue to crank out accounts payable and payroll once a month, and get people hired, and all those moving parts that are occurring. So that's why it does take somebody like Bruce Douglas as our team leader to keep pushing the rope and help us get where we, I use that expression a lot.
You do? Did you make it up?
I don't know. I've used it for years. It's not necessarily complimentary. I'm pushing rope here, people. Work with me.
All right, I now see the-
Yeah.
I'm glad you mentioned it.
Herding cats would be another.
So jellyfish is mine, but I hear you.
And I want to make sure that no one, you know, takes from that comment anything bad.
But we're certainly not going to reuse it.
The team members, they are all in to help with this improvement process. And so it's been great. It's heavy lifting, but it's been great, and it actually helps us form a tighter team, you know, through it. So it's been a good thing. So here are some of the work, the accomplishments. So you know that we've really stepped up the game in terms of the teacher hiring process, getting the pool filled quickly, and then ensuring that we move forward with the hire of them, and providing software access. So there, you know, in the past, we would have a bottleneck occur because there was so much activity going on. It would be challenging for us to have new hires ready to go day one with all of the technology access that they needed. And so by backing up that train, we're able to equip them with what they need access to so they can really hit the ground running and do what they need to do for kids. So that's been a good thing. So in January and February, the team pulled together and went through an investment review, and we actually had someone from Munis or Tyler Technologies come in and worked with strictly the human resources payroll team. Lisa, you remember how many days that was?
Three days.
Three days. And then also worked a few days with the finance team, and that included not only accounts payable and general ledger, but purchasing as well. That side is not as layered as the human resources payroll side. So the result of that is a recommendation list of more than 30 items. So those are opportunities for improvement that we'll continue to determine if that's the right move for us. So, and I mentioned before, the BKD work, they are really close in terms of that risk assessment work. So they've interviewed each of you individually, they've interviewed key personnel in the system, and they are going through their rubrics of identifying what is the most important for them to recommend as a focus area for next year. So the 30 recommendations from the Munis review, you can see those listed here. I won't read that for you, but just basically, it's all about looking at workflow. And do we have parameters set up appropriately within the system that enable us to access other features of the software? That's the type of review we're talking about. So next steps, we will continue the work with regard to the hiring process. We will be identifying other ways that we can provide improved process for employees. So we did have that long list to begin with, and we're not finished with it, so we'll keep working through it. And then this last one, I believe, I believe it's the last one. So strategy 3.1.7, develop and deploy a plan to meet the equipment needs of our students and staff. I'm really excited about this one. It's not there yet, but it's in process, and the team is working on getting the data scrubbed so that it can be input into a capital forecast software module. You may have heard reference, or maybe remember approving, software in the past. It's called School Dude, and that's what runs our work order system. Technology department uses it, the maintenance department, grounds department, and even our purchasing department. And so what will occur with this is we'll be able to enter data for the age of facilities, the square feet, condition of roofs, a variety of things, and not only that, but our vehicles and our school buses and primary equipment in the district. And then it will be able to provide us with costing and better data in terms of building our budget each year. Then I shared with you in a previous presentation that we are committed to consistently replacing buses between seven to 10 annually, and that will help us avoid a dip when we need to replace a number of them all at one time. So, or to avoid that, rather. So this capital forecast software, now, some of you may be familiar with this. I'd not heard of it before, but it uses what's called RS means. And is Tim nodding? Yes. See, this is his section of the wall. So that is a standard for government pricing, and it's indicated there, it's widely used by the industry, and it helps with estimates, to have real-time estimates. And what it does is it looks at not only data points, but data including labor costs in the area. So it really brings it home in terms of what is it going to cost us to affect the changes needed. And we'll be more agile. So in the past, how we've gotten at this has been through this spreadsheet and that spreadsheet, and this opinion and that opinion, and that will remove some of that subjectivity and help us be better in terms of planning. Now, what I anticipate, though, is once we get all of our data in there, the price point, to do the work that needs to be done- So, in the past, how we've gotten at this has been through this spreadsheet and that spreadsheet, and this opinion and that opinion, and that will remove some of that subjectivity and help us be better in terms of planning. Now, what I anticipate, though, is once we get all of our data in there, the price point to do the work that needs to be done is going to be astronomical, would be my expectation. And here's an example. So this is not using the capital forecasting module, this is just giving you some data points. So typically, when you think about a roof replacement, you look at not only the age of it, but certainly the condition of it. This shows you that we have thirty-plus-years-old roofing that would require replacement of two, costs based on the information we had provided to us through materials and labor estimates, in excess of $2.4 million if we were to replace all of those roofs. The twenty-five to twenty-nine-year range is $14,428, and twenty to twenty-four-years-old roofs are, would be a replacement of $9,298. Now you can see that half of that would be a renovation approach where you don't strip down and, and fully replace it. But the district has over $3.7 million total square feet of roofs, and approximately $1.3 million square feet of roofs exceed the recommended twenty-year life cycle. So, we'll need to have a strategy to address that. But at least we'll have real data so that we'll know what's before us and how we need to approach it. So, now, none of this takes, this information here does not take into consideration the facility master plan recommendation. And so that will affect the end result of what we're able to extract, like, from the software as well. Does that make sense? Okay. All right. So, the last piece, it's not one of the strategies, but I mentioned to you long ago that while we don't have data points to show progress improvement, it's mostly anecdotal or opinion of people, much of what we'll be relying upon would be the Stakeholder Satisfaction Survey. And so this slide shows you some of the questions that we're in the process right now of collecting, and the Accountability and Assessment Department partners with the Human Resources Department to launch those surveys to both the staff and the community. And so you can see that we're asking some questions that would provide us with information relative to how we're doing in Focus Area Three. Do you have any questions?
I love this work.
I do, too!
I'm just honored about this work. Because, because developing operational efficiencies and doing things that kind of get all of that stuff out of the way so we can focus on the primary mission of educating students is so important. So anytime that we can make this overhead lighter, either procedurally or financially, whatever, anytime we can make this less of a burden on the district, we are, we are doing the right work.
That, that's exactly right. And that's actually my personal mission, is remove barriers so that those who are working with the teachers or the staff and the students in the buildings can focus on that. And actually, just today, I was in a conversation with one of our principals, and he was sharing with me that they, the Booster Club has managed to raise $20,000 towards this particular project that's needed. It's not, it's not good to have, it's, it's something to repair a situation. And he said, "Well, what do I need to do? We, we haven't raised quite enough money." I said, "All you need to do is submit the work order, and that's it." And so, you know, that's so refreshing when, in interacting with principals, because they're like, huh, you know, they can go back to the work that they really need to do with regard to kids, so.
Okay. Any questions? Come on. Great. Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item ten, Reports Administration. Dr. Jungman?
Just a couple of brief things. Number one, it's great to see several of you at our retirement reception right next door before the board meeting started at four. It's great to connect with several of our retirees from all different kinds of positions in our system, and appreciate all their service. So, there'll be lots of individual ones, but it's great to have the board kind of recognition process. So that happened tonight, great celebration. Other celebrations in the community right now, it's Give Ozarks Day. So a lot of our nonprofits that are partnering with us, if you have not connected with them yet, I think it goes to them, right? It's a twenty-four-hour cycle, and all kinds of partners that support the work of our kids are raising funds to help that mission, their missions move forward, which only support our mission. So if you haven't had a chance to hit the, go give Ozarks website, I encourage you to do so. Other things, great celebrations. This is obviously graduation week, as well as time, they don't all happen this week. The five high schools do, but we also have Studi coming up, and we have the Middle College, so we have lots of opportunities to engage with the culminating moment of what we've kind of come and do, is send them off to the next step. So, I hope you're scheduled. You should have your information to be at graduations, remind people to show up. We'll have big celebrations starting at five o'clock on Thursday and working through late into Friday night, as well as some other opportunities. So, check your calendars if you're not sure about all the dates and times, check with Kathy, and she could get it looked up. Yep. Studi, do you guys have...
I saw that.
Is it Friday? Midday, Friday? Yep. And then, yeah, then Middle College is the following week, I think. And then Middle College, do you have the date?
Did somebody send us something on that? I always try to...
They send a little flyer out.
It comes with a little, yeah.
Specifically card.
Well, I usually get a couple, but I haven't seen it yet.
It's the following week. It's in the evening, it's at the compliance.
Wednesday, 5:30.
Seventeen, there you go. Seventeen to 5:30, so. And all kinds of other celebrations that take place, but those are the big ones as we hand out lots of deployments. So, look forward to seeing you at all of those events as you can make it. We, we do have two car giveaways coming up also for attendance and for project graduation, so those are great celebrations also, of partners that help support our mission and support our kids. Those will be both happening in the next few days also, so stay tuned to the media or come out and watch if you'd like. And Kathy's got the date and times of those also. That's it from the soup update, we'll shift straight to legislative if that's okay?
Yep, absolutely.
No, it's just not...
Yeah, so, you know, right now, we'll knock on everything. It's been a good last two weeks, right? I mean, as we think about celebrations of the Senate and the House passing full funding of the formula, it was actually, I thought it was a historic moment. I was in the Senate Gallery when they voted 33-0 after it came through Conference Committee to send that to the Governor's Desk. It starts at the House, ends at the Senate, and now it is headed that way. Hopefully, that gets across the finish line. Now that's the spending plan, just like a budget is always a spending plan, and now we have to execute that for... We need growth in the economy, it's based on projected revenue, but we're growing at a decent rate. Hopefully that continues and we hit that number, and there's no withholdings. But transportation and funding is, transportation and funding and the formula funding has turned out really good for us. There's only one place that we see a small risk, but it's tiny for our system in the big scheme of things, is the Public Placement Fund, which has been reduced a little bit. Will take a small hit there. But overall, funding's been good. The bigger question is all about the bills, right? So funding is overhead to be in by Friday, they made that deadline, now it's all about the remaining bills. Senate Bill 313 has been the big one, that you've been getting the most updates from MSBA, as well as myself, and sending information to our constituents to engage. And I know many of you have been engaging with our legislators. And as I was up there last week, and I think Jerry was too, we've heard from them that they had heard from us, which is a good thing, and, and heard from our community. I think overall, the indication is that kind of outpouring has made them rethink that pace that they were moving that with. It did not move out of committee last week. It did get a passage out of Rules Committee this week, but it has not been turned in and turned over to fiscal oversight, which is its next step. And we are down to three days at this point, so it would have to go to fiscal oversight then the floor, that's still very possible. So, stay tuned, stay alert, be prepared to engage as necessary. Could certainly move, yes, and I'd say staying engaged. The last week is always the scariest week because this is when things move at incredible pace, and bills that you thought were dead come alive, and things that are, that are live die quickly. And then things that you didn't expect to be tagged to something. There are a lot of things that are being tossed onto different bills, 'cause you just find a moving bill and you try to put your information on it at that point. So, we have lots of people at the Capitol that monitor that, from MSBA to different association lobbyists that give us that information on a regular basis. I will be going up tomorrow afternoon and spend the day, Thursday before graduation as we get close. Hopefully I won't have to make the trip back up on Friday, but I think right now it looks okay. But that can change. So, stay on guard and stay vigilant in the conversations. But thanks for your engagement. I think it's been productive this year, and we're in a decent mood, I think, so.
Thanks for your updates.
Yeah. Yeah, me, too.
And reminders and all that stuff, so that's been very helpful.
It can easily slip off, you know, the emails come in abundance, but thanks for your taking time to engage. I think it's, I continue to get positive feedback, and you're not the only ones. We've had our chamber engaged, the supporting through the Metro Partnership around our legislative priorities, and they, on a regular basis, have been engaging with our representatives and senators also, so.
Just like we say, if you can get the school boards engaged across the state, you can pretty much do what you, get things done. I mean, that's, with that kind of clout, I mean, they get engaged. And I think we began to see that this year, because a lot of them did, you know, so.
So, stay tuned. We're down to a few remaining hours, but they get intense and a little unpredictable, so we'll keep you informed.
I just want to take a second, just a minute to say something, because we were talking about, and we had some of our folks here that are on their t-shirts that say, "I support public education." I think all of us do, and we would be here with our time and effort. But I, I think that we, we don't tell you often, but I think it should be said once in a while, that our, the person in our district who is the strongest advocate for public education, that spends hours and hours advocating, is our superintendent. He is on the road to Jiffy City every time I talk to him or I talk to him, or he's on my way back. And so, you know, someone that, that is really, really putting the time and the energy and the effort and the passion and the desire to do what's very best for public education is sitting up there.
That's right.
And forget that sometimes. Just wanted to say.
That's what we do, but thank you for saying it.
It's a team effort, so keep fighting the good fight. It is worth fighting.
It's only four, right?
Absolutely. Because of the fight is, that's the part of it, it's a fight.
Yep.
It really is.
That's it for me.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, moving on to item eleven, Board Comments. If you want, you got any comments?
You were ahead of your time.
That's all right.
Sorry.
No, that's good.
She kicked it off right there.
Get it off.
That's okay.
Anything else said now?
I had a big, long presentation to ask Carol about tuck pointing and to explain that in detail, and you, I know you really won't believe this, but we've had board meetings where we talked about that in detail, and I, I mean, it's just, I guess my point is there were a number of things on those contracts that, when people have talked about what we hadn't done for buildings, those envelope issues were always things done. Nobody will know that the tuck pointing has been done on their building. I mean, really, nobody's gonna say, "Oh, gosh, look at that tuck pointing." You know, we are so glad our kids are going to a school where the tuck pointing...
Bruce, like, come on.
Yeah. Well, now... I know, I shouldn't say nobody, but very few of us would notice that.
All those who count would know.
Yeah. But those things have been done for years in this district, and that's why we're still using the buildings we're doing. So when, I think they don't remember those things. And now it's HVAC units, which we didn't used to have, but we replaced boilers, and we looked at those roofs, and as long as the roof, but we didn't, very seldom did we have to wait till it failed. Sometimes boilers failed and we had to quick get one in, but those were done at times when there wasn't funds to build inside, but it protected the outsides so the inside could be used. So, those aren't things anybody, I mean, there were a lot, a lot of money there, and there's a lot of money every year spent there that I just don't think people understand the enormity of the expense that goes into our district, not just because our buildings are older, because of the number of buildings that we have. So I think this new software will help us be even more efficient, rather than I can see the point, if it's on a spreadsheet and that person's left, nobody's got the information, which is not good. But that's been done here for a long time. So I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of the fact we're still using those buildings. I would like to do something more, but those things still have to be done, no matter what. They have to be done. And we've done that, and thank goodness now, though, we're, even though Tim would want us to spend more time on what that is, that we're not spending a whole lot of time at the board meeting talking about some of, they just need to be done, and they have to be done to protect the inside. So again, people aren't displaced based on what we didn't do. So, it just reminded me of years before when we spent hours on tuck pointing, which really was not, I still, it wasn't beneficial for me then, and it's still not now, but I wish Tim could have been there, because he could have added a lot more. Yeah, I know.
I lived through your tuck point, and the models I worked in, it was grand.
It was grand.
Any other comments? Or comments? I, just a couple, I don't, I think Dave mentioned it, this is National Teacher Appreciation Week. They're on, nobody's here, a few is here, we got a couple that's still here.
They made it.
And they hung out till the end. You know, we all know how important what happens at the board table and all that, but we also know where the action really occurs, in the classrooms, and how important that is. So thank you for what you do for our kids. And do that. Last, I, last week I spent one of the evenings listening to the Quest Capstone Project. Incredible presentations by some incredible kids, young adults is what they were, because it was so professional, so identifying problems in the community, from how do we solve the parking problem, or the ingress and egress at Glendale, to how do we take care of human trafficking? And, I mean, it was all over the board, and they, it wasn't just stuff done together, they'd done research. I, I was incredibly impressed with the presentation. I only got to see four out of twenty, but they were pretty awesome. And I would encourage you to, I know whether schools have Capstone Project presentations and stuff, and if you get the chance to see them, go see these kids in action. It's pretty awesome.
My warning.
Yeah, it's pretty incredible. Okay, any other board comments?
Thoughts?
Upcoming meetings. John mentioned graduation, Thursday and Friday, if you guys didn't remember, sort of, Middle College, we do have the Leadership Summit in June, at Antara. It's like everybody's that's going, has been registered to go. Any other meetings you might think of, besides all the graduations?
See you back here in two weeks. You'll be exhausted, because there's a lot of stuff to do now, and my kids will be sent home at that point, for a few days.
Jill gets them after that.
That's right. Freedom for them.
Okay. Yes? All right, moving on, plus deltas, if you got any plus deltas about the meeting tonight, please put them in your sticky notes and put them on the board over there. And we do need to go into executive session, so I would entertain a motion here in just a minute, before I read what that motion would be. The Board meet an executive session to discuss personnel and collective bargaining matters is provided in Section 61021, Section 39 and 13 R S M O. So I would enter. Tim? And Alina, seconds.
Move vote.
Second session.
Tim?
And Alina.
And Alina. Take a nap, take a little nap there?
She was thinking about tuck pointing.
Tuck pointing, yeah.
We all are. All engagement.
Drive by every building tonight as I go home, go to... Yeah, that needs some tuck pointing.
That's funny.
Okay.